Good evening, everybody. This is the Finance Committee meeting for Monday, February 24. And we have a rather light agenda tonight, which is good. The First Resolution is 39-20, coming through the Finance Committee. This is a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend their certificate with the county auditor in the General Fund 101. And basically what this is, it's the appropriation into the account for the City Planning Commission in the amount of $500. The original appropriation was $200, and due to newspaper publications for public hearings for the City Planning Commission, this particular amount was already expended before the end of January. So this is adding more money into their account. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And I also show that two readings are fine.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? It's pretty straightforward. Mrs. Bobbitt, will you be the second on that, please?
Yes.
Okay. The next resolution is a lock-in resolution, 40-20, coming through the Law Committee. And it's a resolution regarding opioid litigation and the pursuit of opioid litigation settlement funds. Mr. Hall is not here yet. Mr. Olm, can you enlighten us, please?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. So I apologize for this being a lock-in piece, but I just learned at the end of the day, whatever, on Friday, that this was out there behind Municipal League, basically let us know. And so what this is, for those who haven't kind of followed along, the state filed their litigation against the opioid manufacturers, pharmaceuticals, and then various entities throughout the state pursued their own litigation as well. So as far as plaintiffs go, we have the state, and we have a bunch of other governmental organizations within the state of Ohio all pursuing litigation. The case, as I understand it, is if it doesn't get resolved, goes forward to trial in October of this year. But plaintiffs got together, and basically the state and local governments have come up with this memorandum of understanding, and I'll turn it over to the mayor here in a minute, that he can give you more. But basically, working together to come up with some agreements with regard to if there is a settlement, and if there are funds or whatever that come our way, how those will get distributed, so that all the communities in Ohio who have suffered from the opioid crisis or whatever will have some money to not only reimburse for money they've already spent, but do other things as well. So the problem is, is that they're looking, the High Municipal League wants decisions, resolutions by various legislative bodies in the state by March 6th. They're trying to collect those to see who's in favor of this joint effort, if you will, and who's not, and that will give them direction as to how they proceed. So I apologize to walk in here at the last minute. The mayor can tell you in a minute, they're still tweaking some of the things within the MOU, but it'll look similar, very similar, or whatever. I think there's just a few minor pieces left to what you have before you as Exhibit A. And so we would need to suspend on this legislation tonight to pass that, to allow me to basically sign off that we're in acceptance of this method, if you will, or whatever, of resolution and disbursement or whatever of any monies that the pharmaceutical companies pay out to us. So with that, I can turn it over to the mayor.
There is a belief that being in a hurry to do this is important, because the quicker we get to settled, we get our hand in the pot first, because every state has similar lawsuits. And fortunately, the government at all levels in Ohio, there have been meetings going on for probably five or six weeks now to get this resolved. There is still one technical issue that the local governments have a problem with, and that has some veto power that the state legislators have over certain expenditure. So the way it's going to work, 55% of the settlement will go into a trust that is managed by a board of local government officials and state legislators and state officials. 30% will go directly to local governments based on a formula that's already been determined, and 15% goes directly to the state for whatever they want to do with it. We get .15 something-something percent of whatever the settlement is. So if the settlement was $1 billion, we'd get approximately $1 million and a half. There may be some strings about what it has to be spent on, for instance, treatment and prevention type things. But I know there was another conference call scheduled last Thursday. I have not heard the results of that yet, where this last issue that the local government folks have was going to be discussed and hopefully resolved, and if that was the case, it seemed like this was a go. So hopefully, that's where we are. Anything I missed, Randall?
I don't think so, Mayor.
Okay. So coming through the Law Committee, Mr. Hall, that is your committee. Who is your second on this resolution?
Mr. McDaniel.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, one reading, suspension. Anybody have any -- yes, Mrs. Bobbitt.
Just to make certain that I understand you, because you said that they're still pending changes on this. So if we approve this tonight, the way this reads, I mean, this can still change. The exhibit can change, and you'll be okay? You won't have to come back to us?
That's probably, I think Randall was trying to word it, so...
Yeah, if you look --
Because I haven't had time to read it.
Yeah, if you look at Section 1 of just the legislation on the back of the first page, I just said that it's authorizing me to accept the MOU on behalf of City of Lancaster. I set forth an Exhibit A attached here, too, or in similar form in agreement. Just that language in there, because I know it's going to get tweaked.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Those are all the resolutions that I have before the committee tonight. Is there anything else that I'm missing? Okay. Do we have any departmental update? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I have one. I attended a meeting at the NOPEC headquarters last Friday, and I got some new information about NOPEC. First of all, I learned that they are the largest public energy aggregating entity in the country, also the state of Ohio. I guess that goes without saying. They have 521,000 electrical customers and 400 and some thousand gas customers in 237 communities across Ohio. They also are considered a government entity. They're a council of governments, and their employees pay into PERS system, just like city employees, and they're audited by the state auditor. But important to us, as of Friday, they had 7,088 Lancaster customers signed up, which significantly exceeds those that were using electric aggregation when we were with First Energy, which was about 6,000 customers. The 7,088 will continue to increase as meter readings hit, and that's the point that change has happened. So it's, it sounds like a good report, and a lot of people are signing up to save some money.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mitch.
I'd like to give just a heads up, because I received an email last Thursday from ODOT. It's in regards to the State Route 188 Mill Park Drive intersection. As you know, we participated through the Fairfield County TID, received about $200,000 for that project. It's outside of the city limits, but it's for the Magna project as a whole. I received final legislation from ODOT. Didn't have time to get that in tonight, and I need to turn that around fairly quickly. So when I bring that in next meeting, I'd like to suspend on that if we can. There's just a little caveat I'm trying to figure out as to a $1,300 bill that's associated with it that I thought was all covered within the $200,000 grant. So that's what will be coming forward next meeting. I'd like to get that scooted back up to them so they can bid out the project and get it moving, so.
Okay. I'll look for that next meeting. Any other departmental updates? Okay, I will turn it over to President Olm for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have two ordinances to come before City Council tonight. Temporary ordinance four, which is an ordinance amending the zoning map for property between North Memorial Drive and North Columbus Street, and this coming through economic development. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, I'm going to be asking to table that after our reading.
Okay.
We have some issues that need to be resolved and clarified before we pass that.
So, and we need to set a public hearing.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Law Director, what kind of, is it 30 days known?
I think it's 30 days. I'm trying to pull it up here, whatever. You see, sometimes it can be as short as 20, but I'm trying to pull it up.
Okay. So we're going to introduce this tonight. We don't have to put it on the table as of yet.
Yes, I stand corrected on that.
Okay.
I was referring to the other legislation that will be coming up during the regular meeting.
Okay, so we're going to do three readings then on this particular ordinance, with a public hearing to be set. And right now, it's looking like the best we could do regarding that date would be the March 23 meeting, if the law director is accurate on this, 30 days. So we'll get some clarity on that between now and the meeting, but it looks like we may schedule it. And the reason I'm asking is because it'd be nice to not have to have both these public hearings for this one and the next one on the same, on the same date, so if we could schedule one for the first meeting in March and one for the second meeting in March, but I don't know what kind of notice is required. So we'll work on that. So this is going to go three readings. Who's your second?
Mrs. Downhour, please.
Mrs. Downhour, and we will be acting on this after the third reading. We will not be planning to table it.
Correct.
Very good. All right, any questions on temporary ordinance number four?
You're confirming the public hearing, Mr. McDaniel?
I think we can set it in the meeting when we have some clarity on what kind of notice we have to give. And then temporary ordinance number five, which is also an ordinance amending a zoning map for property along Campground Road, is also coming through economic development. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, this will be a summer we need the public hearing scheduled, and it will be three readings, and I'd ask for Mr. Stoughton to be the second on that.
Mr. Stoughton, the second, three readings with plans to potentially table this after we move through the process.
After, yes.
Okay. Any questions on temporary ordinance number five? Okay, if not, the only other thing I have tonight is, I think during old business, we'll hear an update from Mitch regarding the questions we had from the traffic study from last meeting, and then also we'll be looking at Mr. Hall for an update on the Complete Count Committee and his progress with that, which we asked him to undertake at the last meeting as well.
With that, I'll return it back to the chair.
Thank you. Do we have any other items for Finance this evening? Okay, there being none, I'll enter, ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Boy, she makes that awfully formal.
Do I have a second?
I will ask for a formal second to that formal motion.
All right, we stand adjourned at 6:14 PM.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council begins promptly at 6:30.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
We're grateful for your continued leadership, guidance, and direction in our lives. We pray that you would be with us tonight throughout this meeting. May we continue to put the best interests of the citizens of Lancaster and this great city ahead of any personal agenda that we might have, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in these positions. We thank you, Lord, that you would continue to be with us and help us as we move through the work tonight. Continue to be with all of our city employees. Bless them and keep them as they go about the work that you've called them to do, and we'll give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director, as a point of order, do we need to do anything special, given what's happening to my right up here tonight?
That's a big question.
I know it is.
It's got a lot of parts to it, or whatever. No, I, no, you don't.
We can just flow on. Yes, Ms. Sandy has the flu, I believe, and so the capable treasurer, Wolfinger, is sitting in, so thank you for agreeing to do that, sir. We appreciate your help tonight. If not, then we'll ask that you call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
And Mrs. Tina?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Reading and disposing of the journal.
Uh...
Just what you want to hear out of it. It's all right, you take your time.
Okay, that's the portion, and I'll make the run motion, even though she hasn't filled out. Okay. The clerk presented to the regular meeting minutes dated February 10, 2020. Mr. Schoonover made a motion to receive and file the journal, second by...
Yeah, you'll go ahead and do that now. Go ahead.
Right. You just told me.
Tell me that part.
Not that part.
We'll get her taken care of.
A long night.
We're reading and disposing.
I know that. He said, "Read it."
I did say, "Read it." There was just more there than I wanted to do. Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
Motion, the second, to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any reports to city officials?
There are. Email dated February 11, 2020, regarding Public Works Committee meeting agenda submitted by Mr. Schoonover. Another email dated February 18, 2020, regarding 2020 local tax burden, submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. And that's the reports.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports to city officials.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, to receive and file reports to city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There were no communications before council this evening.
Thank you very much. There are no special presentations or awards tonight. There are no petitions or memorials this evening. Oh, yes, there is. There's a petition, Mr. Clerk.
There were no special petitions presented before council this evening.
Yeah, we had one. I know she probably got it after the update. There was a petition that was submitted with five signatures on it. You guys got that via email?
Yes.
So everyone got that. We'll make sure it's included in the record, Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the petition.
Second.
We motion, the second, to receive and file petition. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. During this portion of Lancaster City Council, we set time aside to allow the voters and taxpayers of the city to address us on any item or issue you would like. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we ask that you come forward to the podium. Sign in with your name and address, and then state the same for the record. Please note that while members of City Council will not respond to you during this time, we may choose to do so at a later portion of tonight's meeting. In accordance with the rules of Lancaster City Council, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Okay, excellent.
I'll go first.
Very good. Just state your name and address for the record, sir.
Richard Brothers. I live at 1572 Bush Hill Drive, Lancaster, also known as River Valley Highlands.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here about Timbertop, and I just want to share some pictures with the council. They're very crude. Actually, three of the pictures are from somebody else's cellphone. We lost our pictures. And I just want to make sure you're aware that we're not exaggerating about how much water comes off the hill. I know people don't want to see a development and such, and people will sometimes exaggerate some things, but I just want to share some pictures with you. If it's okay, I can just pass them around. They're on regular paper, and sorry about being so crude, but I just wanted to make sure. Two of the pictures are a sidewalk. Now, those sidewalks were built in '96, I think. That's when that section of development was being built. And from the water continuing flowing through there, it's destroyed the sidewalk. So I just wanted to make sure you guys know, it's an ongoing issue, and I just want to make sure the city, if they allow the project to continue, that they make sure that they put some kind of retention pond that will hold that water, and not to underestimate how much water comes off that hill, because I'm thinking, when you start putting shingles and roadways and all that, you're going to have even more water, just saturating into the ground. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you, sir. We'll continue to pass.
All right.
And can we keep those and include them in the record?
I apologize. Yes, you can keep them. They're no big deal to us. I mean, we can make more.
We'll make sure that the...
It's not a big deal, so I just wanted you to see the pictures.
Thank you for being here, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council? Yes, ma'am.
Just your name and address.
Please, yeah, your name and address.
Lisa Huffman, 1580 Woodland Heights Lane, Lancaster. I just wanted to first make sure that the petition that was read into the record was the one that was seven signatures. If not, there was another petition that was emailed that was seven signatures.
Thank you.
And I would like to read into the record the substance of the petition, both petitions that have been submitted to date. One that is continuing to acquire additional signatures reads as follows. "A proposal has been submitted to the Lancaster City Council to annex and rezone for development the 76.877 acre property located at 2200 North Columbus Street, Lancaster, Ohio 43130, known as Timbertop, the proposed rezoning area. We, the undersigned owners of property located in proximity to and/or potentially affected by the proposed rezoning area, do hereby protest the proposal to annex and rezone the proposed rezoning area. We request that as conditions precedent to the council's consideration of any annexation and rezoning of the proposed rezoning area, (1) a complete development plan be submitted by Lemon Development, including specifications of the location and size of all structures, roadways, parking lots, and occupancy levels for each proposed use and identification of each individual developer; (2) the Lancaster Engineering Department and the council complete a detailed analysis and review of the 400-plus-page traffic study submitted to the council on January 13, 2020; and (3) the Lancaster Engineering Department and the council project all costs that will need to be incurred by the City of Lancaster to support the proposed development, immediate and long term." The other petition was, "A proposal has been submitted to the Lancaster City Council to rezone the 76.877 acre property located at 2200 North Columbus Street, Lancaster, Ohio 43130, known as Timbertop, the proposed rezoning area. The proposal seeks in part to rezone an 8.452 acre portion of the proposed rezoning area fronting along North Columbus Street to a commercial general district, the proposed CG area. We, the undersigned owners of property abutting, i.e., contiguous to and/or directly across the street from the proposed rezoning area, do hereby protest the proposal to rezone the proposed CG area or any other portion of the proposed rezoning area to a commercial general district."
Thank you very much, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council? Yes, Mr. Huffman.
Robert Huffman, 1580 Woodland Heights Lane Northwest, Lancaster, Ohio. We'd like to bring up two points on the traffic study that have been discussed but not in detail. One being that as the change on Election House Road is made, the comment was that it would reduce traffic on North Columbus Street. Don't believe that's going to be true. People won't be able to enter from the Columbus direction onto Columbus Street at Election House, but they will most likely go up to Edie Road and enter it there. So for the traffic that will affect us, I don't think that will actually produce a reduction in that traffic, as has been stated previously. Second point that has been brought up is that the new junior high school will be opening here in not too long, and that that will have a traditional, or a tremendous amount of additional traffic added to the North Columbus Street with buses and all of the people driving to the school to drop off kids, pay up kids, and then extracurricular activities. So just want you to consider that also in your traffic analysis. And then finally, we've had more conversations with Lemon Development on, you know, just answering questions for us, and what are you planning on doing and such. The latest, one of the latest comments was, they still don't know what they'll be doing with the general, the commercial general area, that area, that they still not found anyone for that, so that they may actually be putting in more apartments there. That obviously concerns me, because it's more multifamily apartments, which means more traffic. It's also not as desirable as residential, single-family homes. But the bigger point that it brings up is the fact that at this late date, the developer still does not know what is going in there, has not pinned that down, and we're at a point where, you know, we're, you're going to be voting to either approve the zoning or deny the zoning. I would just again like to say that I really would ask for you to not just give the zoning, but to require actual details in what's going in there, and then base the zoning on that to support it, after you've analyzed the traffic it will create and the impact on us neighbors and on the city. Thank you for your time, again.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening?
Ms. Beverly Tripp. And I guess my first question is to council, have any of you had the opportunity to go out on Whittier, Hawthorne, Marble Drive? Who, who has been out there to check this situation out? Good. If the rest of you get a chance, please do that. I think once you pull into our... that. I think once you pull into our addition, which is Brookdale addition, you'll notice that there are no sidewalks. The streets are not wide. Woodyear is the widest street, but there's a school at the end of Woodyear. When you turn on Hawthorne, where they wanted to have a road to come in to that, it is very narrow. And there is also cars and trucks that park along the road. So we've got a big concern about our development with the additional traffic and the parking issues as it is. So that's my concern. Also, the new junior high will be opening up when the school year starts, probably the end of August. With that, you're going to have a total of four schools that will have over 2,000 students within that mile and a half. It's really going to get bad. And unless you start preparing now on Columbus Street, I don't know if we'll ever get out of our little addition or not. It's, there's a real safety issue. And another point I'd like to bring up, when Lemon presented their presentation, I feel they tried to sell the finished product. They didn't tell us all the research that they need to do in the water situation, the traffic situation. They kind of got the finished product. We've already got water issues, and we are all aware of that. And they need to do their homework before they try to sell this whole project on our community and in our neighborhood. I have been there for 49 years, and I don't want to be washed away by what's going to go in. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to address City Council this evening?
You all know me. I'm Lauren Peterson. I live at 1101 Green Meadow Avenue in Lancaster, Ohio. I'm so glad to hear what some of the comments have been, because this is in direct relation to what I have found out in talking to Tony Perez, who is one of the principals at Lemon Developers. It was strongly suggested by Mayor Scheffler that I do so and try to get beyond the receptionist who seems to want to answer all the questions. I did talk to her again. We talked for a half hour. She revealed to me that Danbury is what, senior citizens is one of the major developed areas of Lemon. It's interesting, it's not on their website, and it's also interesting, there's one in Dublin, Ohio. So for anyone that wants to go visit Lemon Development, there's one in Dublin. And it took me two months to figure that out and to have that found out. In talking to Tony Perez on Wednesday, he called me back, and I was very happy to talk to him. I talked 40 minutes to him, and I, and I, we talked about five different things. The first one was flooding issues. He tells me, as I think that the city council should possibly also call Lemon Developers and find out about these things, that there are going to be four to five ponds on the development. There's going to be one on the River Valley Highlands side, one above, or in a sense, back beyond the existing pond or in place of. There's going to be one along Hawthorne, that area, and there may indeed be one even in the front of the development along North Columbus Street. So there's at least going to be four or five ponds. I asked what happens if they fill up. Apparently, that won't happen, because they'll have to be connected to the storm sewers. So you're going to have four or five ponds connected to the storm sewers. It may help with flooding in River Valley Highlands. It may. He did say, though, that if there is additional flooding in River Valley Highlands, it will be solely the responsibility of Lemon Developers. They will hold responsibility for any more flooding in River Valley Highlands. That's what he said. Also, I asked about ingress and egress. There's only three points in ingress and egress from this development. The one that I specifically asked about was off of Old Ridge Court. If you go to Old Ridge Court, the end of the street, the elevation goes up about 10 feet. And I asked, how in the world are you going to connect a street when there's a hill 10 feet high? He told me that Pulte owns that property, Pulte Homes owns that property. And he told me that's something that the city and Pulte are going to have to figure out what to do. But he also said, maybe I should get my engineers on that. I also asked about Hawthorne Street, which again is a very steep elevation above Hawthorne Street. And I questioned, how will the water come down on both of these elevations into these streets, whether it be Old Ridge Court or Hawthorne? Again, he said, they hadn't figured that out yet, that they would have to have their engineers look at it. Now, this is within one month of this being annexed or not. And again, some of you said, we wonder when, when will Lemon Developers figure this out and have it, have it, have it developed? Have it, have it done? I also asked about infrastructure, and the mayor said that that will be solely the responsibility and to the expense of Lemon. And Lemon did say, they are completely going to do the cost of apparently North Columbus Street, whether it's that added left lane, curbing sidewalks, I'm not sure, but that's going to be the expense of Lemon Developers. I asked about zoning, because I said that there are citizens who are concerned about the commercial general along North Columbus Street. And he said, and I said, tell me about what would be involved with commercial general. And he did indicate it could be commercial properties such as stores or a strip shopping center. But I said, well, we don't, we really would hate to see that happen. And he said, well, if nothing else, we'll just build more apartments. Those were his words. I asked him about Timbertop. He said, yes, there'll be six to eight acres around the house. And I said, well, how do you, what do you envision happening with the house? And he said he wasn't quite sure, but if nothing else, he'll move in. And I'm not making this up. I want to, I want to bring it to your attention. I emailed every one of you about a master plan of development for Lancaster, Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Your time has expired. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Anyone else that'd like to address City Council? Seeing none, ma'am, you've addressed City Council. You cannot, again. Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Please make sure you sign in after you state your name and address, sir. Thank you. Go ahead.
Gotcha. My name is Joe Carson. I live at 212 Woodyear Drive. Been there for 30 years. Previously, we was over on the Route 33 annex called North Columbus Street, and we moved after 20 years there. So we've been out in that area 50 years. And Timbertop being Timbertop, you know, a lot of people had assumptions as what was going to happen there. But I was at the first meeting when Lemon, Lemon was here, and I think, oh, you have to agree, all we heard was possibilities, maybes, what ifs, could be, maybe this, maybe that. You don't have a plan yet. And when you, if you adopt this measure, carte blanche, they can do kind of pretty much whatever they want. You know, and that's the problem what everyone's seeing right now. And these other people, it's already addressed that issue. I won't belabor the point, but, you know, they've got to have some kind of idea what's going in. And like Pulte just went up there and cleared off that whole area back here and said, oh, we can't build anything here, because there's rock base. We can't dig any basements. Sorry, we've got to, you know, just abandon this project. So you're going to wait for all the trees to be cut down, all the deer slaughtered, before we decide, oops, we can't go any farther forward with this thing. It's, you know, it just feels like everything's going way too fast, and there's not enough planning going into this whole thing. Mr. Mattlin can attest, we need a fire station out there. You've built 2,000 homes, and where's your nearest fire station? Clear River on the west side. And so, as I said, this planning thing, and I see all those flags now down at the intersection of Election House, and that's going to be taken care of, trying to address the traffic issue from the school and everything. We've got a traffic study that hasn't even taken into account the school. You know, and the engineer, if I, I apologize if I misunderstood, but he says it only addresses the property boundaries. So if you've got a funnel of 2,000 cars coming in down to the small end of the funnel, and they all got a pass in the center in that section there between their property lines is all that traffic study addresses, gee, is there something wrong with that? I kind of think there is. But, you know, it's like we've got a traffic study, but we really don't have all the players in place. We've got a traffic study, we don't have all the road infrastructure in place. There's so many questions. This thing, whole thing should be tabled and moved along at a little bit slower pace for everyone's sake, not just the citizens of Lancaster, you know, like people in the second ward, but everyone. Because once that thing gets, gets to rolling, or the trucks going to magically just drop in there with all the stuff they're hauling in, hauling out, that's not going to be an easy fix. You know, and when he said luxury apartments, has anyone driven over behind Walmart and looked at the luxury apartments? I drove over there and I thought, huh, this must be something that Walmart's selling now. They must be selling garages, because that's all I could see, was nothing but garages. You know, and sure enough, at the front, it said, luxury apartments. You know, so everyone's interpretation of all this stuff's a little bit different. You know, and like other people have testified to, yes, you want to make it look as good as you can. They want to do the property, and many may be great people, but when they say manager, we're going to manage this property, don't forget, all these properties get sold to other managers. Just like some of the motels, you see these motel chains like Marriott, they're there for 10 or 15 years until the sprinkler systems have to be replaced, and then all of a sudden it's sold down to another level. And then once those people run through it for like 10 years, they sell it down to another managing group to another level. And that's why you go in somewhere, you think, what, isn't that a Marriott? No, this is run by whoever. So you don't have any control of that. City don't, no one does. So my plea to the council is just, please, slow this down a little bit. Let's digest this and do a little more digging. And let's get this plan, their plan, together so that it can be looked at. They went ahead and bought the property. No one forced them to do that. Okay? This is like one of those, I've been involved in those deals before, where someone jumps in, buys property, and then all of a sudden, oh, what did I get? You know, out beside us, all those fields are full of these gas lines, and no one can build on top of them. That property's been vacant for 20, 30, 40, 50 years since Columbia put all those lines in. But it looks like it'd be a great development, and maybe Timbertop might at some point. But I don't think right now what they're putting for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Carson. Make sure you sign in. Yes. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Ma'am, if you'll go ahead and step up, sir. If you wouldn't mind, just sort of step to the side there with the, you can take the clipboard with you. Very good. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Amy Bright.
Pull that down for me, boy. There you go. Thanks so much.
My name is Amy Bright. I live at 2001 North Columbus Street. I live in the intersection of Woodyear and Columbus Street. And I, again, when I, I tried to figure out enough about the traffic study, my biggest concern is, I don't think the traffic study encumbered the real problem. It is prior to Fairfield Christian Church coming up the hill. When I sit on my front porch, because I have a bird's eye view of that intersection, they're doing, if the light is green and school is out on a pretty Sunday afternoon, they're doing 60. Okay? I don't think the traffic study really, they went from the property line to the property line, is my understanding. And if I'm wrong, I apologize. But prior to Fairfield Christian, they get a run for it. It's a gun up the hill, as fast as they can. And I watch it day after day. A lady was trying to back out of her driveway across the street, and it's death divine. That hill and that intersection, I mean, with or without the Timbertop stuff, it's so scary, because when it's a nice day and there's no school, people are flying. My second issue is, is the hill coming down from Hilltop, I think? Is that the name of the street?
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest, I'm sorry. Apologize. Hillcrest dumping onto Columbus Street. You're coming downhill crest, straight down the hill. I am able to make the turn into the lane, but it is tight, and it is kind of, I mean, if somebody's coming right up that hill, and you're trying to turn off Hillcrest to turn onto Columbus Street to the right, it's pretty tight, and it's pretty, I mean, people fly up that hill. Yeah. My last thing is the water issue. My side yard floods every time we get a good rain. We have flooding coming down that hill, and I just think the city's going to have to address the, I don't know, is it the runoff or the rainwater, those pipes and stuff? I mean, my whole side yard floods just about every single time we have a decent, any kind of decent rain. So I just hope that they look at the infrastructure a lot closer first, especially the intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Marty Stover, 406 Scott Drive. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just can't help it. Just a few things. The retention pond issue with them building all these ponds. Pulte was, cleared that hillside behind Tarhee before, I mean, it took a whole summer, 7:00 to 4:00, they moved dirt, moved dirt, dig trees, and then they build a retention pond. The retention pond now drains into the creek that is across the street from my house. I have to have flood insurance because of this creek. So you're going to put in, they're going to put in five or six ponds up there, and they're going to, they're going to go into the sewer system. I mean, is the sewer system able to handle that? I mean, I don't, I don't, I doubt it. And so if you're going to put retention ponds in, they've got to drain somewhere. Don't drain into my neighborhood, please. We've already got water everywhere. Then Lauren has done a wonderful job. I don't know where he is. Thank you, Lauren. He has just been great at what he's done and the knowledge that he's brought here. And tonight, all I heard him say was, Lemon says, Lemon says, Lemon says. Where is Lemon? I have, since this is, since their first presentation, they have not been at one meeting to defend anything that we're trying to get answers to. So we have a whole, you know, community of Lancaster citizens here that want to voice their concerns, but where is the people that want to make this happen? So just because Lemon says doesn't mean we have to give them what Lemon wants.
Thank you. Yes, please be sure to sign in. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Marion Bryant, and I live at 2408 Prospect Hill. And I just have some questions, because we just moved in from a couple of years ago from New York. So different things are in Ohio, a lot different than in New York. But what I was noticing is, I was going through websites and everything, that you have a development plan from 1999 that gives a lot of information about what should be done and how it should be done. Legally, I don't know if you're bound to that, but there are a lot of points in there that we are addressing regarding zoning, regarding infrastructure. I don't know, how does that work with what we're talking about? I don't know if anybody can answer that legally, how it works. But I'd like to know, because there's about construction schedules, there's about street systems, there's about protecting natural and sensitive areas with trees and wildlife. There's things about recreational areas. When you have more development, there should be more recreational areas. There was things about, the original was negative impact by the Dominion, which is River Valley Highlands. A couple of things they talked about was the traffic flow, annex issues, and high standards for things that are now coming in to new developments, that you should have higher standards than what's already been there. So these are things that we need to think about, again, before we decide to annex Timbertop. And we really need to do our due diligence so that we get the information that we have to make good decisions that not only help us, but our children in the future, whoever's going to live in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here. Please remember to sign in, ma'am. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Thank you all for being here tonight. Are there reports of standing committees this evening?
Yes, we have Finance Committee meeting minutes for February 10th, 2020, submitted by Mrs. Danhour. Second, we have Water, Water Pollution Control Minutes for February 12th, 2020, submitted by Mr. Nixon. And three, we have Public Works Minutes for February 14th, 2020, submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There were no reports of special committees presented to this council this evening.
We have no public hearing scheduled tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 15-20.
A resolution-- A resolution authorizing the law director's office to apply for the Violence Against Women Act grant, vawa.
This coming through finance, Ms. Downhour.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily number 15-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 15-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour.
This is a piece that we've discussed previously, and it is an annual piece, and we always try to apply for the vawa grant, and it's something that we need to continue doing.
Thank you very much for the discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
The roll.
The roll.
The roll.
It's one, it's one.
Thank you. Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 15-20 passes nine to zero. We now have third reading of temporary resolution 16-20.
A resolution, excuse me, a resolution authorizing disposition of city property no longer needed via auction or internet auction for 2020.
This coming through finance with Ms. Downhour as the sponsor, and Mr. Stotin is the second, Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 16-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 16-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour.
This is a common practice that we do whenever we have equipment that has, is basically at its end of life, and we auction it off.
Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 16-20 passes nine to zero. Third reading now on temporary resolution 18-20.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purpose, for the purchase of salt for use by the water department.
This coming through water, water pollution control, sponsored by Mr. James, second by Ms. Teener, Mr. James.
This is actually just replenishing the salt that they will use this year, nothing too much more to report other than that.
Enter motion, sir.
And, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 18-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 18-20. Further discussion, Mr. James.
As I stated, this is pretty much just replenishing their supply of salt.
Thank you very much, further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 18-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 19-20.
A resolution authorizing a service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of phosphate for use by the water department.
Sponsored by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall, Mr. James.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 19-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 19-20. Discussion, Mr. James.
Once again, this is material that they need for the water treatment process, and it's a replenishment.
Thank you, further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Miss, Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
You know I was gonna do that.
You got four in though, four seats, that's pretty good.
So far. Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 19-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 19-20.
A resolution authorizing a service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of phosphate for use by the water department.
Sponsored by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall, Mr. James.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 19-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution 20-20. Discussion, Mr. James.
No real discussion on this, I don't see Mr. Nixon here tonight, but this basically is just handling some of the receipts that we need to for the, from an accounting standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. James, further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 20-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 20-20.
A resolution authorizing a service safety director to enter into an agreement with ODOT for the purchase, to purchase sodium chloride rock salt for the 2020, 2021 winter season.
Sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, second by Ms. Downhour, Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution number 20-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution 20-20. Discussion, Mr. James.
No real discussion on this, I don't see Mr. Nixon here tonight, but this basically is just handling some of the receipts that we need to for the, from an accounting standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. James, further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 20-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 20-20.
A resolution authorizing a service safety director to enter into an agreement with ODOT for the purchase, to purchase sodium chloride rock salt for the 2020, 2021 winter season.
Sponsored by Mr. Schoonover, second by Ms. Downhour, Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 20-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 20-20. Discussion, Mr. James.
Yeah, this is the annual piece for LDOT to contract with ODOT for the purchase of salt for the next winter season.
Very good, further discussion on the motion to pass.
Can't imagine we need much.
Further discussion, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 20-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 25-20.
A resolution authorizing a service safety director to advertise for bids for the Broad slash Mulberry Sewer Separation Project.
Sponsored by Mr. James, second by Mr. Hall, Mr. James.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 25-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution 25-20. Discussion, Mr. James.
Yes, this just continues the separation projects that we're in, already in, involved in, and will help continue to satisfy some of those requirements from the EPA.
Thank you very much, Mr. James, further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero, Ms. Downhour.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporarily numbered 33-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 33-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour.
Yes, prior to the meeting, you all should have received a summary of the details behind this resolution, and note that on the summary, there is an increase in the number of hours for the executive director from 1,298 to 1,800 hours, and the additional monies on this resolution will also cover retirement, Medicare, BWC, training, travel, and association dues.
Thank you for that explanation, Ms. Downhour, are there further, yes, Mr. Matlin.
For the mayor, did the new director not need health insurance or?
Correct, she doesn't, she likes to knock on health insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Matlin, further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stotin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution 33-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 34-20.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of two replacement vehicles from the state term contract for use by transit.
This coming through public works, Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 34-20. Temporary resolution 35-20.
A resolution authorizing a service safety director to execute a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for SFY 2020 hyphen 2021 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program.
Coming through public works, once again, Mr. Schoonover, second of three readings, please. Second reading on temporary resolution 35-20. Temporary resolution 36-20.
A resolution authorizing the city of Lancaster to apply for the Meals on Wheels hyphen Older Adult Alternatives of Fairfield County, comma, Inc., 2020 hyphen 2021 grant.
Coming through public works, Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 36-20. Temporary resolution 37-20.
Now we get a long one.
Does it say an impertinence?
I hope, I was hoping for an impertinence.
A resolution authorizing the filing of applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C., section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, and Ohio Elderly Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, 5339, comma, 5339B, and any other grants that become available through ODOT and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon each grant application approval.
Coming through public works, Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 37-20. Temporary resolution 38-20.
A resolution approving transit's policies for safety point system, cell phones slash personal electronic devices, and onboard video monitoring pursuant to the contract with Ohio Transit Risk Pool.
Coming through public works, Mr. Schoonover.
Second of three readings, please.
Second reading on temporary resolution 38-20. We now have first reading on resolution 39-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate with the county auditor in general fund 101.
Coming through finance, Ms. Downhour.
First of two readings, please.
First reading on temporary resolution 39-20. We now have our walk-in legislation, temporary resolution 40-20.
A resolution to accept one Ohio memorandum of understanding and furtherance of the settlement of the opioid litigation and pursuant, and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds.
I think this is coming through. Yes, as many of you know, this is an issue that is near and dear to my heart, and it has been for the last decade or so, but this is an emerging situation where municipalities and county and city governments may have an opportunity to share in some revenues as a result of manufacturers and distributors being held responsible for some of the damages that they've done around opioids, and I think I might defer to Randall and/or the mayor to make some additional comments.
Before we do that, how about we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, I guess we probably should, yes. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of resolution temporarily numbered 4020.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 40-20. We can continue discussion now on the motion to suspend, I'll turn back to you, Mr. Hall.
Yes, thank you, I again would ask for either Law Director Alom or Mayor Scheffler to make some additional comments if they would like.
Mr. Alom.
Thank you, President Alom. Yeah, this, this piece, I apologize that we need suspension on this, but we're trying to act quickly. The state, of course, has sued the pharmaceutical companies, various local governments throughout the state have also sued, the case is headed to trial in October, it looks like the plaintiffs, being state and local governments, are trying to get together and through this MOU, work out an agreement that should they get resolution with the pharmaceutical companies in this case and reach a settlement, this agreement, as you all can see, goes to how that would be dispersed, and how that would be handled, not only at the state level, but at the local levels, and so basically, they're looking for us to agree to join into this MOU, show our acceptance of that, so they kind of get a count, to see if they can collectively get all the parties to agree on this. The exhibit that is there is the MOU as it currently stands today, it's my understanding, they're still tweaking it a little bit, trying to finalize some other things that the state and local governments are negotiating between one another, and with that, I will defer to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
So, this is a process that's been ongoing for six weeks to two months, with a number of meetings between the plaintiffs' attorneys, city, state, and local officials. Hopefully, being first to the table with this solution will assure that we maximize what we get, or what the state and local governments get out of this, we're trying to get ahead of other states. The way this will be divided, after attorney's fees, 55% of the proceeds will go into a trust that's administered by a board of state and local officials and legislators, 30% will go directly to local governments, and 15% will go directly to the state of Ohio to do[1715.15] directly to the state of Ohio to do with what they like. The trial date for this is set for October, and we know those things can go on for months or even years. So if we can get an agreement between all the parties involved, hopefully, we can get this settled and get some money quickly. Based on a formula that's already been determined, Lancaster will get point one five, I think, six, seven percent of what the net settlement is, which if it was a billion dollars, would be about one and a half million dollars. To Lancaster, there will likely be some strings attached as to what we will have to spend it for, such as prevention and treatment. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered forty dash twenty.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution forty dash twenty. Further discussion, Mr. Hall?
Not at this time.
Other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution forty dash twenty passes nine to zero. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing now, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of temporary ordinance one dash twenty.
An ordinance to vacate a portion of Lowell Drive and all of Emerson Boulevard within John D. Van Gundy's revision of the Colonial Heights addition and to declare an emergency.
Sponsored by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Ms. Downhour, Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council place on the table ordinance temporarily numbered one dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place upon the table temporary ordinance one dash twenty. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance one dash twenty is placed upon the table. We now have second reading on temporary ordinance three dash twenty.
An ordinance to amend ordinance twenty-seven dash nineteen, repeal and replace existing twenty-seven dash nineteen, and declare an emergency for the management pay ordinance.
Sponsored by Ms. Downhour, seconded by Ms. Bobbitt, Mrs. Downhour.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporarily numbered three dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance three dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
I'll defer to the passage.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered three dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance three dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, this ordinance is the corresponding piece to temporary resolution thirty-three dash twenty that we passed earlier, updating the pay ordinance to include the new executive director, assistant director, and branch director.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Mattlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance three dash twenty passes nine to zero. We now have first reading on temporary ordinance four dash twenty.
An ordinance amending the zoning map for the eighteen point nine-three-nine acre property between North Memorial Drive and North Columbus Street slash Nelson Road parcel, numbers zero five three two one five two four zero zero, comma, zero five three two one five two six zero zero, comma, zero five three two one four four nine zero zero, comma, and zero five three two one four five zero zero zero.
This is coming through Economic Development, Mr. McDaniel.
First reading?
First reading on temporary ordinance four dash twenty. Temporary ordinance five dash twenty.
An ordinance amending the zoning map for the twenty-one acre property consisting of three parcels located along Campground Road and including the existing residence address, fourteen forty-three Campground Road, parcel numbers zero five three one zero zero four one zero zero, comma, zero five three one zero zero four three zero zero, and zero five three one zero zero four one one zero.
This is also coming through Economic Development, Mr. McDaniel.
First reading?
First reading on temporary ordinance five dash twenty, and we'll just note that we do need to set public hearing for both of these. There's not enough time between now and the third reading in order to meet the thirty-day burden that we have, so it's my recommendation that we set the public hearing for both of these pieces for four thirteen. Anyone have an issue with setting the public hearing for four thirteen for both of these pieces? If not, then that's what we'll have the clerk record, and we'll give public notice of the same.
That is four thirteen?
Yes. Very good. Are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we have a number of pieces of legislation on the table. Is there any action on any tabled legislation tonight? If not, we'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Yes, Ms. Teener?
I am sorry. I think it was Amy Bright, is she still here? Oh, there you are. There was a question you had last meeting about the drains and that, but they weren't drains sitting outside. They were the, I mean, they were the pipes. So did your question get answered then last week? I'm sorry, no, she can't engage.
Yeah, it's really not the opportunity to engage. You might want to just take-
But I, Mr. Stotin had said something. I was just trying to-
Sure.
-see if there were pipes or something that I guess have been-
I see Mr. Martin's hand. Mr. Martin?
So I did get a chance to talk with Mrs. Bright afterwards. We were the last ones to leave last week. Hopefully, that won't happen tonight. But anyway, really, she freely invited me to stop over to the house, but she works. And so I was over there to look at that. There is, it's pipe on the ground, it's a steel pipe, and it goes to the right of her garage. And it really is a private drain that was probably installed under that. It's really not a city designated. But she is right, the slope going up in the back of her yard is like really sloped. I mean, you know, I'd hate to plow that driveway up there for snow. But, so there is a lot of water, there is a little somewhat of a swell and ditch, and some of it goes out to Columbus Street, some of it gets into that drain, and you can see some rocks. And so I did look at that. I actually have not followed up with her, but that is something that I said I'd stop by Trader Joe's and maybe, you know, that's where she works. Because she works at Cafe, because she works so many hours over there. We'll follow up with that, okay?
Very good. Further unfinished business tonight? Yes, Mr. Schoonover?
I'd like to ask Mitch Nolan to come up so we can maybe get some explanation on the traffic study summary email, since we did receive, I think, a summary versus what we got last time.
Yes, Mr. Nolan.
Yeah, so I've been working on this with our consultant. Abby, obviously, I had handed you guys some paperwork last, at last council meeting. It was a letter that was put together by GPD, our internal consultant that we use for traffic type items. And then obviously, today, I sent you guys an email with a letter where I kind of summarized some of the points of the traffic study from the city engineer's perspective. I can go through that if that's what you guys wish to do, or it's your?
I think it brings up some, I mean, I'd like for you to, yes, kind of read through it.
Sure.
Doesn't take too long.
Yep.
I know you're-
Yep. So I know that one of the things that people talk about, and it's stated many times, about the speed of the cars that go down North Columbus Street, and I don't refute that there's probably some that may go down that street fairly fast. And it probably, in my opinion, that have, occurs at different locations throughout North Columbus Street from our speed study that we took along that stretch. The part right there in front of the Timbertop property, we conducted a speed study there. Actually, Tim assisted us with that, Tim Dietz, with our LDOT crew, put radar, radars out on poles in that location, and the average speed is thirty-six miles per hour. Now, we did record the highest speed at seventy-two miles per hour, so there was an outlier. And then we had the lowest speed at seven miles per hour. So, but the average speed is thirty-six miles per hour at that location. Now, I know that when we, when we did the speed, or when we did the speed study for the Fairfield Medical Center project, those were a little bit higher. Those were in the neighborhood of forty-two miles per hour at that location, if memory serves me right. And a lot of those speeds, that dictates on how we design roadways based off speed and what those types of speeds that we are observing. So that's a little bit of background data in terms of the speed study. I put some additional information in here about rules of thumb. Now, these, these types of things that we talk about from a transportation side, these are not hard set rules, but these are what transportation engineers use, and we talk about, well, what's the capacity of a two-lane road? And I gave some examples of that, where the capacity of a two-lane road typically falls around about a twelve thousand average daily traffic count, and that's, that's, that's in both directions, obviously, so say six thousand in one and six thousand in the other. But there's other rules of thumb that were, would be from a twelve thousand to eighteen thousand average daily traffic, where you would have maybe a three-lane road, where you'd have two lanes traveling with a center turn lanes, like a two-way. We call it a suicide lane, I know that's not the way that, we, we understand that as, as traffic engineers, and so anyhow, that's kind of a rule of thumb that we use. And then when you start getting over around eighteen thousand cars per day, or average daily traffic, then you start looking at maybe four-lane roads. Obviously, Memorial Drive is our largest carrier of traffic. It probably, at certain parts, carries around twenty-five thousand cars a day at certain sections of Memorial Drive. So those kind of give you an idea or a sense of where that kind of falls. Then I made some comments about some of the things in the traffic impact study that are things that need to be revised or checked, or things like that, that are basically rules or criteria or policy that we use for intersection safety, levels of service, just various type of number crunching that we have, that we require in our studies, that we want them to do. The biggest one that really pops out to me is, they didn't use in their calculations, they used the legal speed of thirty-five. Well, if you look at the ODOT manuals, if you use thirty-five, that puts you into a smaller, like a, an urbanized type turn lane, and their turn lanes become smaller, their storage lengths come smaller. We require them to do a five mile over the legal speed limit, which is forty miles per hour, plus that's the speeds that we saw in our speed study. So that was one thing that was the biggest thing that jumped out at me. There's a couple other things, and I listed those in the actual report itself. Intersection site distance, that's, that's a big one for me. Obviously, where they locate where their driveway or where their proposed roadway would come in, has to meet an intersection site distance evaluation. So that's, that's another part that they're not going to put that driveway or that roadway anywhere where they please, it's going to have to fit the criteria and the, and the rules and the policies that we abide by. And, and to be totally honest with you, that's what we do as the engineering department. What we do is, we have manuals, guidelines, policies, codes, standards, all these things, and we have manuals, and I'm sure you guys would just love to come and read them all, I'm sure. But that's what we do in terms of when development happens, and it doesn't matter if that's storm water, if that's traffic, if that's water pressure, if that's anything to do with infrastructure or design of infrastructure. We have certain codes that have to be, have to be followed and abided by in the city. And through Planning Commission, I know we talk about plans, and people are asking about plans. There is an actual process where they have to submit a preliminary plan, it has to go through Planning Commission. Within Planning Commission, there's a whole set of code and guidelines they have to follow. And we go off and we go and we check all the calculations, make sure it works, and all developers have to do that. It's not just this developer at Timbertop, it's not just over here on the east side or the west side, that's what we require them all to do. And that's what keeps a level playing field for any one developer in the city that comes to, comes to the city to develop. So that's what we do in the engineering department, that's what we do in the building department. There are certain things in the building department for building codes, they have to meet all the building codes to get their approvals and permits. And so so far, what I have seen is, they've met the criteria, and they've met the scope of what it is. They still have some revisions to do, and it's going to have, they're going to have to correct them to revise them and get them back to me before I'll sign off. But generally speaking, they've met the intent of the code.
Mr. Stotin?
Thank you.
I'll come back to you.
Mitch, thanks for that, putting it in layman's terms. Appreciate that. So I have a couple questions for you, one specific to traffic and one not. So we have heard that, you know, once General Sherman is open, that it's going to obviously increase traffic over there, and there's no way to do a traffic study on that traffic until that traffic is actually in, you know, actually exists, and it doesn't exist yet. Is it possible to take the traffic study of that particular development and kind of fold it into this study to see if it changes any of the dynamics of the study?
Now, it was, it was taken into account there. We do traffic projections, and that's the crystal ball thinking of how things are going to work and move. Do we always get it right? No, but we try to anticipate those types of things. And we look at where the district boundaries are. Let's just take the General Sherman Junior High, for instance, and you take, and you, we actually analyzed this, we looked at, where is the district boundary of where these kids are going to be coming from? And we would put it up on the map, and we would see like, here's, here's Thomas Ewing over here, this is General Sherman. And if you were to actually look at the district boundary, most of that district boundary is south of Memorial Drive. So there are the pieces and parts that are up on like Scott Drive and over at the Whacker area and some things like that, so you're still going to get those traffic that come through there. But most of that district boundary is down, say, Pierce Avenue area, they're all traveling north, okay? Now, we also look at, okay, these are kids that don't drive, this is mainly bust, but you're going to capture most of that traffic on Memorial Drive coming up to the Election House area and anticipate a lot of traffic coming down and going up Election House Road. Will there be some going down North Columbus Street? Yes. And we try to anticipate those things in those numbers.
So my, so my question, so then your answer is that that impact is included in the study?
It is. We, we actually spoke with Polymer Engineering and gave them like signal timing movements and things associated with our Edie Road project that is going on right now, and that actual traffic study anticipates General Sherman being in place.
Okay. And then my non-traffic related question that I, that I wanted to ask you is, you know, we hear commentary, we received lots of email, even petitions, I think, have language specific to the developer having to give a complete and exact layout of what they intend to do with those seventy-seven acres. That would be, that would be really nice if they could and did, but, but they won't. And the, the, the question I'm asking you, just generally, I mean, that doesn't happen ever, does it? I mean, in a, in a project maybe this size, because things change.
That's correct, yes.
Explain that, I mean, just for the, in lay terms, so we can understand that.
So, you know, I, I was, I was on the private sector side, so let me just try to explain a scenario, and maybe this helps you understand that. So I was on the private sector side, I would have people like Lemon Development come into my company to do this kind of work. Do they have it all figured out, and we have it all engineered out to the nth degree, and we know exactly how that's all going to work? No, because first of all, that costs a whole lot of money and so much stuff ahead of time that, that they don't know a lot of that stuff. But what we do is, we actually put together a preliminary plan, and that preliminary plan is this kind of generalized two-dimensional plan that will actually go through city council, not, I'm sorry, not city council, Planning Commission. And they will, they'll lay out their sewer and their water and all their types of like some drainage type things, and it'll be this preliminary plan very similar to how when River Valley Highlands was annexed in. They did not have the preliminary plan on all of that River Valley Highlands at one time, and they knew exactly how it was going to lay out. Those things changed over time, they put roads in different places, and they had it annexed in different stages as it moved towards the back. And I guess it's not typical that you would have every answer and everything laid out in exact detail at this stage in the game. I know that they're working on- I know that they're working on it. And it'll go through Planning Commission and you'll get to see that. Or if you go to Planning Commission and be a part of that, you'll see what their plans are and how that kind of unravels. And we'll be going through and checking the code and making sure it meets all the criteria of the things that we look at, so.
Okay. And then just a comment to the pictures that we got tonight. Those pictures were dated July 10th, 2017. And I got a little information and we had a rain event on that day in that timeframe of about two and a half inches. We had one hour timeframe of over an inch and nearly an inch and a half of rain in one hour. So, I don't want folks to think that those particular pictures are an everyday event. That particular day, the rain event, and that's data that Mike Nixon can provide to you and Denise can provide to you. But, there were, there was a heavy rain event day on July, I think it was July 10th.
It was on a Saturday.
I don't remember whatever it was.
I remember it.
Yeah. So, I got the data, asked a couple of questions and got some rudimentary information and then there's more available. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mitch. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Ms. Bobbitt.
Just to follow up with Tom's questions here in regards to the traffic. Because my mind has not served me correctly. What was the total, what was the total amount of daily traffic that we said that this was going to bring? Is it in, have we heard that yet in the study? Was it in the study?
You're talking about the average daily?
The average daily.
From the development itself? Uh, no, I didn't, I don't have that information. I can get that information to you.
Well, because, I mean, you went through and you gave us, you know, the 12,000 average, then a three lane is 18,000, Memorial Drive is 25,000. So, I just wondered what the comparison was then?
Of what is compared to what's there today versus what will be there after it's all built out?
Possible, yes.
Uh, just guessing, I would bet over time, because obviously what we're doing is we're assuming that this is actually, you know, the development is actually going to happen over time, correct? It's not going to happen tomorrow.
Correct.
So, over time, we estimate that out. And I can get you those numbers of those projections of traffic.
Well, we've talked, you know, how many residents and how many people are going to be in senior living, how many, you know, the apartment?
It's probably in the couple thousand average daily traffic.
Okay.
So, you'd probably be instead of what's the existing is 83, 8400, we might be in the 10,000, 11,000 range.
Okay, thank you.
Roughly, without going back through the study and finding all the numbers.
But, just to be clear, they're in the study. You just don't have them tonight off the top of your head.
Yeah, I just don't have, correct. They're in the study.
They're in there. I just couldn't remember them tonight either.
It's like preggo. It's in there. Who has the pictures? Can we pass them back around this way, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Further questions this evening? Yes, Mr. Schoonover.
Back to the traffic study for this project. We had a couple of people mention that they weren't sure if the study was from just in front of the property. But, what did the traffic study include from essentially where to where?
So, and I know Mr. Carson mentioned this. So, when I, I've said this earlier, let me pull out a picture here.
Because we discussed on the phone, we discussed the Whittier intersection. We also discussed Signal at Bush Hill and Columbus, right?
So, yeah, so this is in Figure 10. This is actually in the study itself, this figure here. And it basically shows a lot of the intersections or all the intersections that were analyzed. So, they analyzed the intersection of Memorial and Edie, North Columbus and Edie, Scenic Valley and North Columbus, Bush Hill, North Columbus, Woodland Heights, North Columbus, the actual proposed entrance, Hillcrest, Whittier, and then also Whittier and Memorial Drive. Those were the selected intersections that were studied during this traffic study. And they took traffic counts at those intersections and all that kind of stuff. So, they actually analyzed kind of that corridor around it from North Columbus down to Edie and then over to Whittier. And those were part of the scope that the city engineers created along with GPD. But, to get back to your, I guess there's been talk of, you know, they have to account or make public improvements based on the traffic that they generate. They don't, they are not required to make public improvements to our roadway system for something that General Sherman creates or Tar Hee Trails creates or
The hospital.
The hospital creates. We, if we did that, we would be going across the whole city trying to find places that people, you're required to make improvements over on the other side of town. And so, what we do, and it makes it equal and fair to all developers that they have to make improvements based on the impact, we call it a traffic impact study, of what their development creates. So, I don't know if that answered your question.
Mr. Hall.
Yeah, but wouldn't it also be true that if there is an additional impact, that as the city of Lancaster, we would need to take that additional impact into consideration as we sort of look at and consider traffic flow?
What do you mean?
Well, you just said that the developer wasn't responsible for the additional traffic that is going to be created by the new junior high school.
Yes.
But, you know, there is an additional impact.
Yep.
And we have to take that into consideration as we look at the traffic patterns in that area. So, if there's additional work that needs to be done as a result of the cumulative impact of the two developments together.
That's correct.
Then that could be an additional expense that we're going to have to bear.
Yeah, yeah. And like you said, so we talked about like sharing the information about the general high or the junior high and the Edie Road project, which we knew were all happening, which was all part of this Palmer Engineering plan because we have these things that are happening simultaneously and sharing that information so that we're getting the most up to date data as it moves forward. Yeah.
So, the reality of what you're saying is, is yes, you're correct, Mr. Hall, and we've done that.
Yes.
We've taken those things into consideration within this study.
Yeah.
Further questions? Mr. Mattlin.
Just a point to clarify. We've gotten a couple of emails about the speed. And when you said they're going to take, use 40 mile per hour as their, for their scope, for their basis, we're not planning to raise the speed limit on Columbus Street from 35. It's just using 40 as their basis.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That is a good clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mattlin. Further discussion or questions? Mr. Martin.
So, Mitch, a comment was made. I know you're a civil engineer. We have two civil engineers on Stormwater Department. What is the purpose of retention pond? It's actually, and how that affects a stream? Because the whole concept of retention ponds by federal EPA across the whole state, briefly, in our.
So, some people say retention, others say detention by the technical terms of it. Detention is typically a dry pond, whereas a retention is a kind of a wet pond. You see that these ponds out there that just look like, you know, they're just look like ponds you'd go fish in, right? That's a retention pond and then there's other that are dry ponds. But, the purpose of all of those is what we call is just knock the peaks off. So, what we do is we, when we evaluate storm water runoff, so there's going to be this development, it's going to increase the runoff because we increase the impervious area. So, what does that do? It doesn't have places for it to soak in and it runs off quicker. So, what we do is we analyze these things in different storm events and we, and the technical term is, is we take the 100 year post down to the two year pre. I know that makes, means nothing to you guys, but what we do is we make them release the water at the two year pre-developed rate. And what we have to do is you actually have to store the 100 year runoff from the post development to the two year pre-developed rate. So, all that volume is stored in that pond and then it's released and metered out at a slower rate. So, we knock the peaks off, so it's not coming through as fast. Now, it'll come through longer at a smaller little scale. It's not like we've reduced the volume that's coming off. There's actually increased volume because we have the impervious area. But, what it does is it just releases that out a very slow rate and it controls that rate. So, that's the purpose of those.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Anyone else? So, I think we had heard someone, maybe it was Mr. Peterson suggests that it's possible that some of this development then is going to help deal with some of the runoff and flooding and water issues we're currently seeing. Is that a possibility?
I would anticipate that.
Okay.
Yep.
And then one of the other things you said that was interesting to me is said that everything you've seen within the traffic study, though you know that there are some tweaks that need to be made, which they're going to be required to be made, it meets the intent of the code and the rules. What is the intent of the code and the rules that we have set up?
So, the real intent is that we protect the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of this town. And that's the true intent of when we get right down to the core of it. You know, for me, for me as an engineer, I mean, we don't want to have safety problems where there's accidents or people getting hurt and intersections that are dangerous. We would like things to move nice and smooth and no delay. Is that in reality in our world, the truth? No, because there's always delay. We can't create highways and roadways big enough to handle the levels of service, to have the best level of service, level of service A, what we call. But, what we try to do is we try to mitigate those to the best we can. And that is what we as the engineers do through our traffic study is mitigate those things through the traffic study analysis.
I appreciate that. It's helpful. I was having a conversation with someone today who made the comment that a great many of the comments that we've heard from the residents are legitimate concerns. And what I hear you saying is, is that the things that the developer is required to do is meant to address those very concerns that we're hearing from people.
That's correct, yeah. That's why we have standards and policies and manuals and things that all developers have to do.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have further questions for Mr. Nolan this evening?
I have one different question on a different citizen concern, but since you're standing there.
Okay.
Person has a two car driveway. How close can a car park?
This is, I think it's a code enforcement issue.
Well, he would know this. I mean, maybe Chief Pollard does. How far is it legal to park up to the, you know, where the cutting for the driveway is? Do you have?
Like to the property, like your neighboring property line?
Well, if you have a driveway, how, how far can I, how close can I park to the apron of your driveway?
I think it's three feet.
Three feet.
I thought there was like six and 10.
I think we took it out of the code.
That's in the code. I don't.
I'm sure it is. All right. And then the second question I have for this call is, are people supposed to be putting their toders in the street or leave them on the curb?
Well, there are some times where if you've got a lot of cars on the street.
Let's say River, let's use a development like River Valley Highland as an example.
Because of like Autumn Drive is so wide, it's nice to just put it right next to the curb so we don't hit the stop sign. We don't really have a code to say you can't do that. But, most people are pretty good on deciding where to put that. You know, you can put it in the driveway, but I mean, we have some people choose to put it right there.
Let me lead you to where I need to get, all right? And then I'll be done. So, the truck has parked within three feet of my driveway. I put my toter behind the truck and then there's a car parked in front of the, where the truck is parked, if you will, on the street, a perfectly legal, you know, legal to park. I have a resident that wants to make that, you know, illegal for the truck to park there, which it isn't.
No, it isn't. And sometimes people are going to bring it, if you've got car after car, they'll bring it to the edge of the car closest to the road so you don't have to go between the cars with that gripper. And they're pretty smart. Sometimes I don't like it, the whole purpose of automation is so we can have less people do more work.
Sure.
But, they sometimes will pull that out there to safely get it. But, if it's a chronic problem, you know, because a lot of times these are neighbor feuds.
That's exactly what this is.
That's what it is.
Thank you.
And we have it on.
I appreciate it.
But, there, yeah, so, but is it three feet? I mean, there is.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Some, I will find out.
It depends if it's a single, if it's a drive or a double. It is different. I'll help, sorry.
I believe the law director may be able to correct me on this, but I believe we took the distance away from the driveway out of the code. And I believe there is no code that addresses how close I can park, I just cannot block. Is that correct?
I tend to agree with you on that, yes.
City councilman, guy that's in economic development, you ever been on code enforcement? So, that's only a good answer.
I might have a little experience in this and I feel confident in my answer.
Well, I'm not going to argue with you.
Yeah, that's very good.
I thought for sure that we had in, I thought for sure we had in the code, though, there was a certain distance.
We did. It was removed for whatever reason. It no longer exists.
I think we did, yes.
But, let me tell you this, though. If a driveway is parked, like James Road, when you go to Midill, we would have people block a driveway and people can't back out because they're dropping off kids.
Let's don't open a whole another can of worms.
So, let's keep the can of worms eye open, all right? Thank you.
Well, I want to talk about, I want to talk about people parking across sidewalks. Can we?
Yes.
No, we're not going to do that. You can't do that either. That one's in there, right?
Yes, that one's in there.
That one's in there. You can't park across your sidewalk. All right. Other old business this evening. Mitch, thank you very much. We appreciate your update. Thanks for your time and your work on that. All right, yes, Mr. Hall.
The Complete Count Committee.
Yes, so we need to appoint the Complete Count Committee for the city of Lancaster. The mayor and I met several times and talked about this and we could think of no one better than Mr. Hall to head this up. And so, we asked him to do so and he has a group of people that he would like to propose to be appointed to that committee. The, again, purpose of the Complete Count Committee, just briefly, is to push out information about the fact that the census is happening and how it's happening and how important it is for people to respond to it as it's happening. And this committee is meant to help assist with that, correct?
It is.
Okay, so please, go ahead.
So, I would like to ask the council to appoint the following citizens of Lancaster to the Complete Count Committee. Former Councilman Jerry Woodard, Ani Cordell, David McCoy, Kelly Ailes, Councilman Becky Teener and Pete Sanderow.
Mr. President.
Mr. Stone.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint those people to the Count Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint that slate of candidates to the Complete Count Committee. Mr. Woodard, Ms. Cordell, Mr. McCoy, Ms. Ailes, Ms. Teener and Mr. Sanderow. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Only thank you to those folks for participating. And Orman, thank you for rounding them up.
Happy to do it.
Very good. And there are some things that have to happen. There's this required training thing that will happen and then there'll be work that Mr. Holland and his committee will do. So, thanks to each one for your willingness to serve. Further discussion? All those in favor of appointing these signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, they are appointed. And again, thank you, Mr. Hall, for your work.
You give me that last staff member.
I will.
Yes, very good. Further unfinished, or further old business or unfinished business this evening? Any new business this evening? Mr. Olm.
Yes, thank you, President Olm. I just wanted to have a discussion or at least make council aware. So, the CIC, the, has been in place, was put in place or whatever by ordinance of City Council back in 1970 to do economic development. It's done a great job with that. The Rock Mill Industrial Park, that acreage and that development out there is a lot, thanks to them. They're having a meeting on Wednesday, their annual meeting of the Board of Trustees and Community Improvement Corporation, sorry for those at CIC. But, they are, it looks like headed towards, they've had conversations, the executive committee, which the mayor is on and maybe can speak to more of, but conversations, gotten legal counsel, basically just looking at have they kind of run their course. And one of the things, of course, that played into that was the Lancaster Port Authority, newer statute or statutory being, if you will, in Ohio can kind of do what the CIC does and more, has a little morbidity or whatever than the CIC does. So, they're looking to possibly or likely dissolve and want to convey the land that they have left and money, if there's money there, whatever, to the Port Authority to continue on with economic development. So, one of the main things I wanted to bring up, and of course as that goes, the agreement that we entered into back in the seventies is that with their dissolution, they can do that, they can actually give any assets they have over to another entity that is pursuing economic development activities, and it basically gets dissolved through the common police court. But back in November of 2002, the city entered in an agreement with the CIC with regard to basically infrastructure development out in Rock Mill. In the time that I've been the law director and city prosecutor here, I know we've had several occasions that, as part of that agreement, as the acreage sold, the city would get the lion's share, if you will, of the sale proceeds of any acreage out there that would go to reimburse for infrastructure that was done out there. Over the years, we've had, in my experience, many occasions where that money didn't come back because it was an incentive thing, you know, to get economic development. So, one of the questions I think that they're gonna have on Wednesday for me, and so I wanted to bring up with you tonight, is that agreement. I've looked over the agreement, it doesn't look like there's any ability necessarily to assign it or transfer it, we don't speak to that in the agreement, but I kind of wanted to get council's thoughts on, you know, with their dissolution, of course, what you would like to do with that agreement. Do we want to enter into a new agreement with the Port Authority? Do we want, you know, to not enter into an agreement, just kind of get some thoughts on that? Put it on your radar and get some thoughts, if I could. Mayor?
Yeah, one comment, for background purposes, the CIC came into being because Anchor Hocking donated a couple of hundred acres to the city, it was put into CIC for economic development, and has, most of the useful, or prime acreage has been developed, and so what's left is less desirable, smaller lots, and I think Magna and South Central Power got the last two big lots, Magna got about twenty-five acres, and South Central Power got about forty-two, as I recall, so there's not much left, and the CIC is paying a lot of money for auditing fees, legal fees, et cetera, to stay in existence every year, not to mention Travis Markwood of Chamber is the treasurer, and invests a lot of time in just doing mundane work that probably far exceeds the, the utility that they're getting out of it at this point.
I think on the acreage, if I had add, I want to believe they say there's about seventy acres left, of which only about forty acres is develop, developable, with about thirty acres being either, you know, floodplain, wetlands, that sort of thing, whatever, but that really can't be used.
Very good.
Yes, the, the agreement was only for the Phase Two of Rock Mill, the original two-hundred acres is not part of the reimbursement program for the infrastructure, that was done privately by the CIC, and then the two-hundred acres which we purchased on down the road is where we entered into agreement with the, basically enterprise departments and the street department. Over the years, we have recouped the money that has been owed to the general fund, as we go forward, I can give you complete spreadsheets of how much land was sold, where the money went, and how it was tied. As a reminder, when we did the spec building, that was, that was waived by city council to build that, also, when we went into the, the Magna program, that was also, was part of the incentive for them to locate here. The actual Phase Two acreages is probably somewhat less than twenty or twenty-five acres, when you say the seventy acres, that's the entire park, and if you know where the, the state highway garage back in that area, there's a lot of flood area that can't be developed, or we have sewer issues, but that's not part of this, this deal, this transaction. And that was one of the issues that came before the executive committee, I've been on that for about thirty years, seems like, and it has run its course, it's, there's no money coming in under land sales, and then from there, you, there's, like, the Port Authority has a revenue stream, as you all know, and it makes sense that be the controlling arm for economic development.
Very good, yes, Mr. Stone?
The only question I have, I mean, I think that, you know, the CIC certainly served its purpose without question, but if we're, we have an entity, and then another entity that's similar to that entity, doesn't make much sense. My question, and Bob, you may be the, the person to answer this, the agreement that we have in place is, does it seem to work, and if we can't assign that as a part of, you know, the transfer of assets, is it something we want to emulate as part of our kind of go-forward strategy with our port? And that's just really more of a question, or was there anything, you know, faulty with the arrangement that we had with the CIC?
No, there was nothing faulty, I, it was a vehicle that allowed us to develop the park, the, the new two-hundred acre park, getting the road all the way across to one-eight-eight, and getting the sewer lines, water lines, and things of that nature. The, the prior two-hundred acres, we were able to sell land off West Fair Avenue, generate some money, we borrowed to a CDPG 108 loan program and other things to make that happen. Well, that's all done, that, those loans are all paid back. You know, it is a good program, but it helped the city, it helped the CIC develop that parks, portion of the park, and create jobs, which was the whole purpose. It doesn't seem to make sense, in my thoughts, when we have such a de minimis number of acreage left, why go through the process, whereas that, when we sell the land, if it's the ports selling the land, it's still in somewhat the domain of the city, and we need to be looking at purchasing more land, quite frankly. We're out, we're almost out of developable land, industrial zoned, that can bring in new business, and that's our real key.
Well, gets my question, is, are the mechanics of the, the, you know, the contract or the process we have with the CIC, is that something we want to emulate as that dissolves, and, you know, we basically hand that stuff off to the port? I mean, you know, the same, you know, reimbursement for, you know, you know, when there's reimbursable funds, to disperse them that way, or is that kind of run its course?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I think it's run its course, because I, I think that with those funds, you know, we're asking forty-two thousand dollars an acre, I think the, the land sold to South Central at thirty-five thousand an acre, I believe, so we're not quite at that value, so if you have twenty acres at, at thirty-five thousand dollars, or seven-hundred thousand dollars, and you get money back to the, to the enterprise funds, yeah, that's significant money, but however, the money can be placed in a position to acquire more land, so that we can develop and bring more industry in, and as it, as our spec building sells, we want to do another spec building. It takes a lot of money, and I think it's probably better off, when you look at the enterprise departments and their liquidity now, that doesn't really contribute a lot to their operation.
So you're saying then, and again, this is both, but the better thing to do is take whatever revenue we generate, and basically put it back into getting more revenue, revenue generating property to continue the process?
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, that's my position, but it's also the reason why we've recommended the CIC dissolve, because there's no resources to buy more land, or develop that land.
Okay, no, that's good.
So, if that helps you, I mean.
I get it, yeah, thank you.
Very good, Ms. Bobbitt?
So do we need a, a motion, are you looking for a motion from us?
I, I think right now what I'm looking for, I mean, your thoughts on it, basically, I know it's a concern for the members, the executive committee members, and I'm sure the trustee members of the CIC, that this contractual obligation, you know, will, that the city is basically willing to allow that to be dissolved, or whatever, if you will, with the dissolution of the CIC, I think is, is their concern foremost.
Yeah, I, I would think at some point in time, there needs to be, since that is a resolution from way back, I, I think there needs to be a resolution brought forth to dissolve that agreement, but I think what.
Yes, I, I, you know, I'd bring for a formal.
Right.
Resolution or something, but I brought it up to you now, just because I know we'll get the question on Wednesday, and I just wanted to get council's thoughts, or whatever, on that, you know, of, of the notion of that, of that agreement.
The concern of the, the CIC and their legal counsel is, you know, we have farm leases, we have leases on the South Central, deal with the solar panels, and some other things of that nature, those are, are assignable, those transactions will play, however, the agreement with the city is not assignable, so otherwise, it's kind of a cloud on the title, if you will. So the idea there would be to, if there's somewhat agreement, that if there's no major objections, I think Randall has the position that he could say that the city council is willing to take a look at this, but I think we do need to have a, a resolution to make it formal.
And I would bring that, I would bring that resolution for, I was just waiting actually for them to have their meeting, to see if that's actually the course that they take, you know, so I didn't bring anything forward at this time, because it's kind of moot, but wondering about the congress.
Yeah, I, I, they're, they're gonna vote, hopefully Wednesday, to dissolve. Now, it's gonna take months to get all that done, I mean, it's not gonna be, wake up Monday morning, we'll have opportunity to forward a, or, or a resolution.
So I guess what I would ask, maybe in a different way, is, is there anybody, is there any council member that, you know, really sees a substantial concern or problem with, you know, letting them out of that obligation, should they dissolve?
I see most head shaken now, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Law Director Allam. Is there other new business this evening? Mr. Mayor?
Might mention, the State of the City is Thursday morning at the Crossroads Center at seven-thirty, I believe, so hopefully all of you will be there.
Very good. Further new business, yes, Ms. Bobbitt?
Just wanted to mention, and give thanks to ODOT, LDOT, and the City Engineers Office, the traffic lights at Main and Memorial look beautiful, I don't know if we've had time to mention that, but it, they look, they look nice, and they're gonna serve, well, beside, they're gonna serve a good purpose. Other thing that I want to mention is that Provisions is now open, the old Four Reasons, they're open from seven AM to four, now, nobody asked me to make this, but I went out to the website, and I thought, well, we need to make that announcement, so you've got, you've got that new restaurant there, you better go down and see if it's as good as Four Reasons was.
I'm just glad that my daughter's back to work.
Well, and she works at Provisions, right?
Yeah.
To follow up on Mrs. Bobbitt's comments about traffic lights, I, I hope everybody has noticed that there's a significant difference in getting around the city, since the new traffic control system is in place, and it will only get better going forward, as the system learns, and I, I believe we have another upgrade to do that includes some artificial intelligence capability that will learn traffic patterns, et cetera, and make it even better, so, but it, it's amazing, I've, I've been amazed myself of how better traffic flows than it used to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further new business this evening? If not, we'll ask that Mr. Wolfinger read our announcement of scheduled meetings.
Our next council meeting is March ninth at six-thirty, and followed by March twenty-third at six-thirty.
Very good, and then you have the committee meetings?
We do, we have a finance committee meeting scheduled at March ninth at six PM, council chambers, water, water pollution control, March eleventh, eight AM, at the Water Protection Control Conference Room. We have economic development scheduled for March nineteenth, seven-thirty AM, city hall, second floor, in the eighteen ninety-seven room, ITT Telecom, March twentieth, seven-thirty AM, city hall, also second floor, and the finance committee meeting, March twenty-third, six PM, council chambers.
Very good, that does take us through March, and then just a reminder, on temporary ordinance four and five, there will be a public hearing on four thirteen. Are there any bills this evening?
Yes, we have one bill, it is to lift off LLC for two thousand four hundred dollars. The purpose is our annual subscription to Office three sixty-five, Plan G three government.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It's your email account.
It's your email. For all, it's not just us.
I imagine that's just the city council portion.
No.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really?
We wouldn't get billed, we wouldn't approve a bill for something else other than that, yeah, that's just us.
Well, you're right, there's a license for each person, and you have ten licenses.
That's right.
You're right.
And how much was the bill?
Two grand. Steep.
That'd be two hundred and forty dollars per person.
Wow. That's probably correct.
I'm not sure if it's annual or three years, we could ask that at the IT.
I'm guessing that's a three-year, because even in the private sector, it's only ten dollars a month, or something like that.
It's beefy.
That'd be twelve hundred.
You're gonna find out for us.
We'll, we'll verify that.
Thank you very much.
Two years.
A little late now, since we already, you know, voted to pay it, but it'd be good to know what we. You didn't, well, you're on there, sister, you didn't abstain, so. Okay, very good, is there a need for, yeah, is there a need for an executive session? No need for an executive session, let me just say to our, our stand-in clerk, thank you very much, you did very well, more than an adequate job, thank you, sir. Great job, but let's hope Teresa's back at the next meeting.
Well, you know, she's not feeling well for her to miss a meeting. She's very committed.
She texted me and told me she, I think she, she is not feeling well at all, so keep her in your thoughts and prayers, sir. Very good, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, we are adjourned, please remember to sign your legislation, it's right up here, thank you all very much, have a great week.